Good evening. We'll bring the Thursday, March 15th Ides of March City Council Infrastructure Committee meeting to order. So we're going to start with, I'm not in particular state, let's just jump into our first item, A, Isaguahobart Road Corridor Study. Would you like to start with a comment?
I would. Thank you very much. Yes, and just so we're all aware, we're to some degree been chitting a little bit tonight on a few things. Kurt Seaman, who was backup to Sheldon, is unexpectedly unable to be here tonight. So if we're not able to answer all of your questions fully, I apologize for that, but we certainly will get back to you with answers on any of these items. Having said that, though, I think we've got good contingent here to play ball. So on the Isaguahobart Road Corridor Study, the first thing that I wanted to say is we're going to have a presentation tonight, the results from this study, but I wanted to talk a little bit about next steps so that that's understood before we launch into talking about data. So the next steps on this project are for the full council to receive the report and hear a presentation about the data findings and the list of the consultants' recommended projects. That will occur at the Committee of the Whole meeting on April 24th. City staff from that point will continue to analyze the proposed capital projects that would be in our jurisdiction and look to incorporate any desired ones into our capital improvement plan or make any desired modifications to any existing projects that are already in our CIP that might also relate to the findings in this study. As this is the off year of our CIP development, it's the right time to do that consideration work. And when the revised capital improvement plan returns to City Council next year, we can have a more focused discussion on all of the transportation projects, the interconnectedness of them, our overall goals for those projects, which to pursue first, which to eliminate from consideration, et cetera. So I just want to reemphasize that the recommendations in the report are not necessarily administrations proposed recommendations to council at this time, and there will be plenty of subsequent debate about which should ultimately be incorporated into the city's adopted capital plan. With that, I think we're ready to hear about the corridor study. A lot of great work went into this, a lot of great data, and so I'll throw it over to Fay Shafi, who's from our Public Works Engineering Department, and John Pascal, who's part of our consultant team from Transpo. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fay Shafi, and I'm the Senior Transportation Engineer in Public Works Department, Public Works Engineering. And we are happy to be here tonight to share with you the results of the study, the Isaguahobart Road Front Street Corridor Study. Just wanted to note also that we had provided project update at the September 21st of last year at the CIC meeting, and we obtained feedback on the types of solutions that were being considered for the corridor. We have a brief 20 minutes long presentation. I will provide an overview of the project and then turn it over to John, our consultant, to present the technical information. And then after that, we'll wrap it up, wrap up the presentation, and we have time for questions and comments. So this, the corridor study is a joint project, and City of Issaquah and King County have partnered together to study the corridor and identify solutions that can help the corridor function better and provide more efficient traffic flow. The study is funded by both agencies, and the city is managing the project. I'm the project manager. Today, we will provide a summary of the study findings and how we got there. We highlight what the data inventory and traffic forecasting told us about the corridor, and also what are the major issues along the corridor and how solutions were defined for the corridor. We will also share with you the list of the recommended projects. So the corridor project limits are at the north end is at the intersection of Front and Gilman within City of Issaquah, and at the south end of the project is at, sorry, 18 and Isaguahobart Road within the unincorporated King County. So I have worked for the city for over 12 years and have received a lot of different comments and concerns about the operation of the Isaguahobart Front Street Corridor. And the reason this corridor study was initiated was because we needed to gather data and facts about the corridor so that, to help us better understand what is happening in the corridor and what are the problem areas that, different locations that are the problem areas that we can focus on. The goal of this project is to evaluate the operations of the corridor and identify solutions that can help enhance safety and travel time reliability along the corridor. And it was not the intent of this project to develop solutions, regional solutions, that increase capacity and traffic volumes. Also, as part of this study, the goal was to provide a comprehensive inventory of existing corridor conditions and multimodal infrastructure, and so that this would provide us with a common baseline. Also, we investigated future operations, speed and safety issues along the corridor for both the existing and future 2040 traffic conditions. We provide conceptual design strategies and cost estimates for implementing short-term and long-term multimodal improvements along the corridor, and to identify the lowest cost and the highest value improvements that can enhance safety and mobility along the corridor, and to prioritize the improvements. So now I will turn it over to John Pascal. He's the principal at Transpo Group, and John and his team, John has managed the project for us, and John and his team have done a great job working on the project and have been part of our team and working with King County and with the city staff. And John has worked on many other similar type projects, corridor studies, in the region, and including projects for the city of Bellevue, city of Seattle, Kirkland, Redmond, and many, many other cities. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Fay. So I guess I get to jump in and kind of give you more specifics about what we did and what our conclusions were from this entire study effort. So I want to kind of give you a little bit of background on the type of data and information and evaluations that we did as part of this corridor study. And so this slide basically just highlights that we wanted to, as Fay said, a comprehensive inventory. So we didn't just want to look at traffic volumes, we wanted to understand the different types of infrastructure on the corridor, where the gaps in the pedestrian bicycle systems are, where, who's using the corridor, and where are they coming from, where are they going to, some of the travel patterns. We also wanted to look at some of the bottlenecks and what's causing those issues at some key intersections. And then, of course, always the top priority is safety, and really what's contributing to some of the historical collisions on there, and what can we do to address those. We looked at the five-year history of collisions along the entire corridor, so this, remember, this is over eight miles, so there is quite a number of things that have occurred along this corridor over the years. And what we wanted to do was really understand where these collisions were occurring, the severity of those collisions, and whether they were, whether ped bike, pedestrians and bicyclists were involved, and wanted to really get a better idea of whether there were engineering solutions that we could consider as part of this study. So what we found within the city was that a lot of the collisions that are highlighted here in this map, and this is kind of a heat map, so the darker red is where, you know, a more majority of the collisions are occurring, and also on the map is there's little tiny dots, and the dots are actually where some of the injury-related collisions are, and in some cases, there were a few fatalities, unfortunately. Within the city, most of the collisions were rear-end type of collisions, people, because of the stop-and-go traffic, people not paying attention necessarily to what's happening in front of them. And in the county, a number, a more majority of the collisions were kind of run-off-the-road collisions, either due to high speeds, weather-related, people just not paying attention to the curvature of the corridor. Traffic volumes fluctuate quite drastically along the corridor, particularly in the peak directions, and so you see, this slide attempts to highlight the fact that in the AM, we have a very high northbound movement. Some of the highest volumes actually along the corridor in one direction are in the AM. This is Front Street, just south of Sunset Way. Just north of Sunset Way, we can, the corridor can serve nine to almost 18,000 vehicles a day. And then Sunset Way to Second Avenue, it ranges from, you know, 13,000 to almost 19,000 vehicles a day. The PM, you see that the PM peak is more, is there a similar number of vehicles going in each direction, but the AM has that very, very high peak. Wanted to share with you just one other data point along the corridor, because it's something that we found very specific to Isaguahobart Road, and that's that it has almost dual peaks, two peaks in the AM period going northbound. And the reason for that is you see a very high peak early in the morning, 5:30 to 6:30, and it can really handle a lot of vehicles because at the northern end, it's not congested yet, so a lot of vehicles can kind of get through the corridor. And then the school buses come along, more people are trying to get onto the corridor from the side streets, and it really kind of reduces capacity quite a bit, and so you see a little blip in the AM. And then it goes back up after schools have started, and less people are trying to enter the corridor, it goes back up. But 1,200 vehicles an hour is quite a lot for a one-lane roadway. And then in the PM, it's pretty much constant, southbound from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, there's, it's pretty much at capacity, it's not serving anymore vehicles, pretty much at 1,000 vehicles an hour going south. One of the major pieces...
Can you, yeah, that slide. Can you, so it looks like you've taken the data and tried to put it on a slide to make it more easily digestible for us, which I appreciate. The Isaguahobart Road, north of May Valley Road, and then you're talking about traffic entering and school buses and kind of a conversion, if you will, time, conversion zone. But where specifically is that jam-up? Because if I remember reading in the materials, there, it's, there's a specific jam-up along Second, for example, where the schools are, so could you slightly unpack this a little bit about where that is?
Sure.
Because I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily as crowded, or maybe it is down Isaguahobart Road, but I'm just wondering if you could give us a little bit of detail.
I think, I think as any user knows of the corridor, is it changes as you, as you move along the corridor? And I think if we're talking about the AM period, northbound, I mean, one of the big bottlenecks or pinch points is at Cedar Grove intersection, which is actually south of where this count was taken. And then as you approach May Valley, you know, more vehicles come on as Tiger Mountain hits the roadway at the northern end, more vehicles, and then Second Avenue is also a source of some of the queuing and congestion.
Okay.
So it's kind of, there's multiple points, and all of those contribute to the issues that I think people face along the corridor.
Okay, thanks.
The other piece of the data collection effort, which was actually pretty comprehensive, was we put up what we call Wi-Fi readers, and so we were able to take, collect it, to read someone's unique Wi-Fi device at one location and then kind of track it through the system. Their, their unique numbers, there's no data attached, we don't know anything about the device or who it is or whatever, but we can at least track signals, basically is what it is. And so then from that, we're able to kind of understand a little bit more about some of the specific travel patterns along the corridor. So in the report, you'll notice, if you've looked at the report, there's pages and pages of these graphics showing different travel routes depending upon where you enter the corridor and at what time you enter the corridor, whether it's in the AM or the PM. And so this really provided a good, a better understanding of who's using the corridor. To sum it up, though, to take all that data and to kind of give you the bite-sized nuggets to digest, it's really about what we found was in the, in the AM, about 50% of the people using the corridor were entering the corridor at the very southern end, SR18 area, and traveling all the way through, at least to Gilman, to I-90, or further north along East Lake-Samamish Parkway. Same happened in the PM, where about 50% that entered the corridor at the very north end at I-90 Gilman, traveled all the way through and left the corridor to either get onto Highway 18 or to continue south. And that's, and I don't think that type of data was particularly surprising, but it was able, but what we were able to do was kind of confirm some of the suspicions that we all had about the corridor. So that was some of the information that we actually shared previously back in September. And so some of the slides that now we're going to walk into are things that are new to people that have seen this before. So one of the things that, when we walked away back in September, was one of the challenges that we faced was to, okay, so we know the corridor, there's problems along the corridor, we know where those problems are, so how do those change in the future? And so one of the big pieces of this was really understanding the regional growth and land use that's envisioned, not just within the city of Issaquah, not just in unincorporated King County, but within eastern King County, so areas south, Maple Valley, Black Diamond, Covington. And so how we did that is we used the Puget Sound Regional Council Travel Demand Model, and that's really based upon the Vision 2040 adopted regional plan for the Puget Sound region. From that, we were able to essentially get growth rates for this corridor, and I want to say that these growth rates were reflective of not just this corridor, but all the other corridors in the region, because we know this is one of a few north-south routes, and all of them are, have their challenges today and in the future. These forecasts assumed that some of these regional projects were completed that are funded or either planned, and that's SR18 widening, that's 405 improvements from Bellevue to Renton, it's the ST3 investments in the region. What I would say is that we did compare these forecasts to some of the more, Issaquah forecasts, Issaquah also has a model, its own model, but it's not as, it's not as large as the corridor itself, because this corridor goes all the way down to Highway 18, so we couldn't just utilize that, we had to use the regional model. But we compared it to the city model, and it was very consistent, and that's documented in the report. So we feel confident that we're consistent with what is the best available information that anyone has right now of what 2040 might look like, knowing that things will change along the way and that it's just a stamp in time. As part of that, we developed an operations model for the corridor, because we know that there are particular bottlenecks along the corridor, and those bottlenecks will get worse over time as growth occurs. And so we really wanted to have a good understanding of how the corridor operated before we really drilled down into specific intersections and other things. So this slide is a slide of the AM peak hour, and on the left side is how things, essentially the average speeds along the corridor today during the AM, and then on the right side is how those speeds might change in the future, given the forecasts that we developed in 2040. And so continue to see heavy northbound flows, corridor speeds will continue to decline. I think some of the things that you will notice for Issaquah in specific is, in the downtown area, it does, from Gilman to essentially Newport, it does become even more difficult in the future, and that's because you're seeing growth and development within Issaquah itself, or expected to over the next 25 years, but also to just more activity. You have more people walking, biking, you have more parking activity, there's just a lot more going on that's contributing to access and circulation. The northbound AM travel speeds will continue to decline along the King County segment as And then during the PM, I think it's just, you're kind of reversing it, one of the things I would say is people might question some of the data here or some of the speeds and say, hey, you know, you know, I don't go 17 miles an hour, you know, south of Second Avenue, but we know that volumes fluctuate on a day-to-day, and so what we did was we collected information over several days and averaged it out, because, because we know when you enter the corridor, your experience is going to be different depending on when, if you enter during the first 15 minutes of the peak hour as opposed to an hour later. So we wanted to have an average condition, and this was the best information we had. And then PM, things actually get a little bit better on the unincorporated, just south of the city. We're predicting them to get a little bit better, not much. You see like speeds going from 17 to 19, and that's like, well, why would that happen? That doesn't make any sense. But really what's happening is, is that downtown Issaquah becomes very congested, and it becomes pretty much a meter, has a metering effect, so you really just can't push more vehicles through. And that's what, and that's why things actually don't significantly worsen in the King County section of the corridor. And I think if you think about it, that does make sense. If you experience it today, everyone's trying to get onto the corridor, whether it's from Second, Newport, Sunset, it can only, it can only handle so much. From that, that's just one of the pieces of data that we wanted to share. We have a whole lot more in the report, but from that, we're able to kind of understand where things were not working, where the safety issues were, where the bottlenecks were, where there was gaps in facilities. And then from that, we developed a solutions toolbox, and we wanted to do this because we wanted to make sure that we were evaluating every type of project or solution conceivable. We didn't want to eliminate anything from the get-go, we wanted to make sure we had everything on the table, and then to fit that solution to the problem. And so what we developed was a solution toolbox, there's a table in the report that has much more detailed information on all the types of solutions we looked at, but they were pedestrian bicycle solutions, there were transit solutions, there were technology solutions, there were intersection solutions, they were corridor-wide solutions. What we didn't do was, we did not look at regional solutions, we didn't say, hey, what if we did something to Highway 18, or hey, let's go fix SR900, or let's go make investments along 405. We didn't, we stuck to the corridor itself, because that was really the scope of what we were tasked to do. Once we, once we came up with potential solutions to fix identified problems, we went through a very deliberate process of really looking at those solutions, evaluating them against the safety criteria, against reliability criteria, against implementation criteria, making sure that, you know, they would address safety issues, that they would provide better reliability of the system, or that they could be implemented, that they didn't cost too much, that they provided some benefit, that they could be phased over time, things like that. And so on the project list, you'll see actually each of the projects were rated based upon this evaluation criteria. So from all that, just to take a step back, the process that we actually used was looking at the existing corridors, predicting what the future might look like, where the issues were, identifying solutions, and coming up with recommendations, and that's how the report is actually organized. I'm going to jump into the projects now, and what I would say is while I'm focusing on the recommended projects, if you look in the report, there's actually a long list of different projects. The recommended were, are a few of a number of projects that we considered. We also have what we call lower priority projects in the project list. I'm not going to cover those today, I encourage you, ask questions, you can look at them, but there are things that just didn't make it up to the top, and then we actually have projects that we just, as a consultant and agency staff, just didn't feel that we could recommend them for a variety of reasons. So I split it up into Issaquah projects and King County projects, recognizing there's two agencies here, and they both have, they come at it with different viewpoints. So one of the first projects that, the first project I'll talk about is Sunset Way, it's an intersection project, and what we're recommending there is basically creating left turn lanes going east-west. There's not dedicated left turn lanes, the signal therefore isn't operating as efficiently as it could be to serve not just vehicles, but also pedestrians. And so if we created left turn lanes by essentially rebuilding the southern portion or the south side of Sunset Way, we could fit those in, we'd reduce lane widths a little bit at Sunset Way to 10 feet, which is very doable. The next project was at Second Avenue, and this is basically to provide a much better non-motorized connection from the intersection itself up to Rainier Trail. On the east side of the roadway, there is no, there is no sidewalk or bike lane, and so it would be kind of rebuilding the east side of Second Avenue to direct bicyclists and pedestrians up to the trail, which is going to provide a better user experience heading north into downtown. The next project...
Sure.
That segment there, you're talking just that little piece, it's like 100 yards probably from Second to the trail.
Just a little piece.
Yeah, so it's very, or not, towards the corner, it was that little sharp piece.
Yep.
There's another project that goes all the way to the, toward the sun, and it's another project, we may do it all as part of one, sorry, we may do it all as one, part of one project. We identified this section, but I think we have another project that goes all the way to match with the existing sidewalks for the school.
This is just going to connect the pedestrian piece there from the trail.
Yeah, just to the crosswalk at the, at the trail.
Okay, thank you. And I, I just asked, Mr. Chair, do you want me to go through each of these projects? I know we're kind of running long, but is that, is that okay? And you guys can ask questions along the way? Okay. Right. So the next project was what we're calling the Front Street Access Management, left turn access restrictions at both Holly Street and Alder Place. And what we're finding, there were, there were a record of collisions there at those intersections, and there's also multiple threats, people wanting to get off, turn left onto those roadways, not necessarily seeing pedestrians along the sidewalk. It also, you know, as traffic stopped, turned left, they back up, so it really reduces the capacity of Front Street, and increases frustration of drivers. So we're recommending that some type of access management restrictions be put forward, they could be their time-of-day restrictions, or they could be all day long. The other project is Dogwood Street. While there has been some investments there recently, what we found was to square off the intersection, so bring both legs of Dogwood in, so they're actually, they're not offset, and then redo kind of where Rainier and the West Dogwood Street align. And this would both improve side street access to the corridor, because we'd put a full inner signal in there, so people could get on, off the corridor more easily, create a better pedestrian experience in crossing, and rebuild the trail crossing as well. And then finally is adaptive signal control, and what this is, is smarter signals, not just along the corridor, but off the corridor, along Newport Way, along Second, along Sunset. And they're demand responsive, so we know that the corridor changes over time, if there's an incident anywhere within the system, things change quite drastically, and so we want signals and technology to be able to respond quickly to that, and right now, they don't necessarily have that capability. And right now, they don't necessarily have that capability. And then, and then finally, we have multiple locations in the study area. I have it on the bottom, but I don't show it on a map, but digital travel time signs. And basically strategically, put those on I-90, on SR 18, on SR 900, and along the Issaquah Hobart Road to show kind of current travel times, so people, at key decision points, so people can actually change their routing if they need to.
And we can also program those, we can also put messages on the message boards, similar to the ones that we have within the city, and in case there are incidents or special events or something like that, we can use those.
Sorry. Do you have any questions on those that are in that kind of group of recommendations?
The adaptive signal control, that's specific to the intersection at Dogwood Street in the recommendations, and are there other, there are also other intersection improvement recommendations, and I was wondering about the value of adaptive signals more broadly at those other intersections as well.
So the recommendation, and the recommendation is actually to improve eight of the, eight of the signals in the system. So it would be all the signals from Dogwood to Second along Front, and then also along Newport, so going over to where Sunset and Newport meet, Sunset, Second, and then also at the school. So it's about, it's eight signals in total. And then that's, that's because this system operates together today, and since we're looking at this corridor, that's what we're recommending. It's not to say that the city couldn't explore even going further than that to the entire city. Do you want to?
No, I just.
Are there questions?
Did you also want to go through the King County recommended projects? There are only three projects.
Yeah. Do you want me to go through the King County ones?
Just quickly.
Okay. So King County, we started with, actually, if you look at the project list, there's a very extensive list of projects, safety projects, operational projects, and kind of whittled it down to a few recommended ones, talking with the agency staff. And King County just has a different viewpoint on what they would like to see. In any case, this is what we came up with, really focusing on May Valley Road intersection. And we came up with actually two improvements there, and that's why there's, there's two. Thank you. We'll start with one. We wanted to provide an improvement. What we don't want to do is provide such an expensive improvement that would never get done. That's, that's, that's not what we want to do, but we do want to show what the ultimate improvement should be. And so the, what we did was we looked at essentially a roundabout there, but we also considered if you widen that intersection out to provide essentially a northbound through lane that would merge back in, that didn't have to stop at the signal. So essentially widening out the intersection. The same thing would be true for the roundabout, where we create like almost a two-lane roundabout, where we could essentially provide better capacity at the intersection, so it wasn't necessarily the bottleneck, it provided more capacity there, recognizing that, that, you know, there's still queuing issues north and south of there at times during the day, but overall, it was improving that intersection. At the same time, we also recognize that that intersection has been impacted by some of the truck restrictions through, through the city, and so we're seeing different movements of trucks through the intersection. So the roundabout would have to be a fairly large roundabout to accommodate those trucks easily, and so that's what we designed. The county isn't set on whether it's a roundabout or a signal, and so if this project moves forward, they would do more analysis to really pinpoint which alternative they move forward, move forward with, because there's a lot more analysis that would really need to happen to understand all the full impacts, environmental, right-of-way, and things like that, that we just didn't have the capability, capability to get into. The second project here was a lower cost improvement. What could they potentially go out and do quicker if they didn't have $3 million, or $2.5 million? And that was to lengthen some of the turn lanes and provide a better turning radius at the intersection today, so trucks wouldn't block the through traffic, or could more easily navigate the intersection to not create more congestion, particularly during the AM when there's much more truck activity. And then finally, the Cedar Grove, much like May Valley, it was still, we recommended a roundabout, just looking at the, how it would operate in the three-legged intersection, but the project list doesn't, it still keeps the option open to widen it out as a signalized intersection as well. So that was what was recommended in the county. Any questions on those county projects?
Emily already covered this slide, so we don't need to cover this one.
Oh, yeah, there's questions.
Thank you for all of that. I had a question on the tables on page 12 and 13 of the packet, I guess it would be five and six, tables one and two. It looks like table one has, is the intersection collision summary, and it shows that the collision rate along the entire corridor is highest at the zero mile, so up there at I-90. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And so none of the projects that are, would be in this, in the recommendations address that, correct?
Correct.
And so that would, that's because it's the jurisdiction of the state?
There's a couple of reasons for that. The first is that it is essentially a state intersection, but more importantly, really, that, that by itself, I don't think is a limiting issue, is that the state's doing a much more detailed study of that intersection right now, looking, doing an interchange, interchange justification report, where they're looking at a variety of different interchange improvements. And so we felt like to come up with something right now on that, when they're doing a much more rigorous and detailed study, that, let's let the outcomes of that kind of dictate what needs to happen there.
Okay.
At the same time, we didn't include anything, any improvements for Gilman and Front, because that is also included as part of the IJR and justification report that John just talked about. So as part of that, we need to determine what type of improvements we can provide at the intersection.
And then at the bottom of that page, underneath the table, it says that the 75th percentile for intersection-related collisions along the corridor was .48 collisions per million entering vehicles. Using this number as a benchmark, several intersections above stand out. So can you explain why .48 collisions per million of entering vehicles is the, is the correct benchmark, since I don't know? Is that because it's a 75th percentile, or is it just because I don't understand why that was used as a benchmark?
That's a good question. And I think the simple answer is that there's, there's not like really good industry standard benchmarks for, you know, when an improvement is justified necessarily at an intersection. So what we try to do is to kind of look at where some of the higher collision rates are occurring along the corridor, and that was just kind of a place that we could go, okay, since that is the 75th percentile, that's focus on the ones that are above, and then look at those in detail and go, okay, is there an engineering solution that we could actually do at those, at those intersections to fix it? Or is it a problem caused by those intersections? So we would, so we, what we couldn't do is we couldn't go collision by collision because of so many collisions along the corridor. We really had to focus our efforts on where those higher collision incidents were. And so there, once we narrowed it down to that, we actually went in, looked at the collision type, the day, the time of day, or there are kind of similar contributing factors that we could actually address. And so that's what that means, is really, that's kind of how we approached it.
Okay, so it almost sounds like, since there's no real good industry standard for benchmarks, that sounds slightly random to me, and so it would be interesting to have more information on why that would be the right benchmark, because you can change that benchmark, and then you can change the results of the study and recommendations fairly dramatically by sliding it around.
Other than the fact that there is a percentile here, also what the standard is, and MUTCD recommends, is you're looking at the number of accidents per year.
Okay.
And there are some, like if there are five or more, or three or more accidents per year, you look at that and look at those locations and focus on those specific locations.
We have that data then?
No, but looking at the number of accidents on here, you can tell there is, I mean, I'm sure you had reviewed all of these, and based on the number, how many we had at each location. But like, for example, at Northwest Holly, we have 45 accidents, which means that it's more than five accidents per year probably at that intersection. Or there are other locations along here that have a very high number of accidents.
Sure.
So that's another way of looking at it and determining which locations to look at and focus on.
Because there's numbers, and there's also types of accidents.
Yeah.
And so breaking that down even further might be interesting.
I mean, there are some accidents rate that you can use, sorry, for, to compare, like WashDOT has a typical accident rate for arterials, for major arterials, for collectors, or for other ones, that you can compare it with what WashDOT's standards are and how they look at.
I have a follow-up question about collisions. Exhibit two, there is clearly many more rear-end collisions than any other type of collision. And so I wondered if that is, is that standard for very congested areas, or is that something unique to how this corridor is?
Actually, it is, because you have a lot of stop-and-go conditions, like on Front Street, like you have pedestrian crossings, you have parking maneuvers, people are stopping all of a sudden to park in one area, going back and forth, so the car behind them. And now we have, nowadays, we have a lot of drivers that are not paying attention to their driving, and all of a sudden stop, and that causes a rear-end accident. Also, the turning movements at the intersections, as people are turning, people stop all of a sudden, and the cars behind them has a domino effect. So those are the type of situations that cause rear-end accidents, also at signals. And people are stopping at the signals intersections, and the people behind them are not paying attention, or just all of a sudden stopping. Those could be a cause for rear-end accidents. And on, along Issaquah Hobart Road, you have a lot of mid-block, people stopping at a higher speed, and people stop all of a sudden to make a turn at a driveway or at a minor intersection, and that's why it causes the people behind them stop all of a sudden and causes the rear-end accidents. So those are typical for those type of situations.
Could that, so following up to Vicki's question, and the characters, so the, the types of collisions on a corridor such as within the city limits and Front Street, could that be an indication that that street is, how do I say it? That street is handling traffic in a way that it was not intended to handle the traffic, like regional traffic going through a downtown with pedestrian crossings, which were always intended to be there, rather than something wrong except for the amount of traffic?
No, it is true. I mean, that was intended, the vision for Issaquah Downtown is not intended to be the way it is designed, and with all the parking and all of the pedestrian crossing, it's not intended to accommodate regional traffic and sending a lot of traffic through. So that could be a reason.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So what's the, the public involvement part of this? This was in the hands of stakeholders, and it did say there was purposely not a public touch, data wasn't gathered from the public because of the, I guess, the technical nature of the report? So what is the, is there a plan for getting public input, or is that left to the public process that we have as far of our, as part of our capital facilities plan part?
Sure. I think it comes in a few different ways. One is just by socializing this report, getting it out into the public like we're doing tonight, and as we will be doing to get it into the packet for the Committee of the Whole meeting in April, we get comments via those avenues. We certainly can use other communication channels to make sure word is out, that the report is available. Second to that, I think you're right in assuming that the next logical place would be at that moment in time when we start talking about what to do with this information. And so there will be additional conversations as we start looking at the capital improvement plan in the future, and we start looking at, you know, which projects we might want to pursue and, and why. So I, I'm sort of envisioning that we, instead of just bringing you the whole capital improvement plan and all of the transportation projects across the city, we might, on this particular focus, want to package up these projects again, and have a distinct and separate dialogue around the projects that were associated with this corridor study. So we can talk more about whether or not council feels that would be good.
Is that, is that in your, answer your question? Okay, good. So the public process is yet to come. This is the technical engineering data gathering phase, and then it's information that they say that folks will be gathering, well, we haven't determined that actual process yet. Committee of the Whole will really start that discussion in my mind, some of that. Okay? All right. Is that it for questions? No, go ahead.
The improvements that we're focused on were a lot of the intersections, and I wondered, although it wasn't recommended, I don't, or it wasn't focused on, the improvements having to do with carpooling and motivation for people to have more than one person in a vehicle, van pool. Could you speak a little bit to what would, would make that a recommendation, or what, under what circumstances that is successful? I also noticed sort of to that, there is a, in the packet, there is mention that on Wednesdays, there's, that's the Issaquah School District's day with a different release time, and that could affect the traffic. And I think that I personally, anecdotally noticed that when the school is out, you have very different traffic patterns.
Yeah.
So based on that, and based on that it was mentioned but not focused on, I wondered if you could speak to, under what circumstances, carpooling and those sorts of changes would be beneficial.
You want me to take that? Okay. So, you know, one thing that we need to add to the recommended list, that is, if you actually go to the project list, we have a project called Transportation Alternatives that is actually on the recommended list. We didn't talk about it, though. And it's called the Van, Carpool-Van Pool Incentive, Marketing, Education, Performance Monitoring, Travel Subsidies. So it's really kind of the campaigning to get people to choose alternative modes. And that's, that by itself, you know, is a project that we're recommending, but, you know, who's implementing that and how is kind of the next question. We did, we did have a number of projects where, where we looked at, you know, potentially locating like a park and ride around SR 18. That was something that we discussed with the county. But because that wasn't in the King County Metro Long-Term Plan, the county didn't feel comfortable having it on the recommended list, but it's still within the project list. We didn't want to lose sight of that. We wanted to keep it there so that we can show that we looked at it, that that's something that we think would, would be of value, and that, you know, during the next update of the county's plan, they could consider that. So to clarify a little, what you hinted at in your statement there was that, yeah, there's a whole list of projects, way more than, than we've talked about here a little bit.
bit. And everything was kept in a list, so nothing was getting, gotten rid of, but some of them, agency such as county said, you know, we're just, we don't want to talk about that because it doesn't feel like there's any implication, like there's not bus service planned for Isaguas Hobart Road.
Right.
So they didn't think, they wanted to put a park and ride somewhere, just for van pools or something of that nature is what you're basically saying.
Yeah.
At this point in time, but it's still in the list.
It's still in there. I think in case, you know, that discussion ever wants to be moved up the food chain, you know, then at least it's documented.
Right.
But, yeah, that's just kind of...
We're in, on 900, there are future metro routes for 900 but not for Isaguas Hobart, so that would be a different discussion there. Okay. All right. So we'll go for questions. I guess just, I want to restate kind of what Emily stated earlier, that this is kind of the first, that this information is getting out to the public, wanting to get it out as quick as we could and share it. So like I say, just get that going, let people talk about it and start digesting it. The Committee of the Whole is April 24th and it will be discussed again with the whole committee. So it'll be out there again. Meantime, people can be finding it. A couple of people asked me, is it gonna, is this report going to be put on the web?
It's there now in the packet, obviously, but we can look at creating a news item to elevate it to the front page for a while. So I will certainly follow up on that.
Okay. So yes, on the website, I don't have to go to here, that'd be great. Okay. So with that, I think I just open up to public comment. All right. So thank you very much. That's clear.
Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Just because your question kind of made me, reminded me that we still have some information that we want to put up with the report and that's, there's a, some detailed dependencies that weren't provided on the website yet that have a lot more, have even more details than the report itself. And so we'll be getting those up there, which includes project cut sheets. So basically like a one-page project summary, so I, which contains a bit more information and actually illustration of each project, so you can actually visualize what we're talking about. So those, those are forthcoming and we're, we're just trying to get them finalized.
Great. Thank you for that. That will be, make it easier rather than trying to speak some engineering, technical jargon or whatever. All right. So I'll open up for public comment. Anybody?
Highway 18, Highway 18, Highway 18, that's three things. But anyway, it's not gonna, the amount of growth we're gonna get between Isaguas Southern Boundary and Highway 18 is pretty minimal. I mean, there's hardly any land left to develop. It's almost all five-acre zoning. You got a lot of public land, you got wetlands, you got creeks, you got all, all that stuff. It's all gonna be coming south. My wife was meeting with a Tohoma School Board member. She worked 42 years in Tohoma School District, Maple Valley area. And they're going nuts there because they're, they, the city has decided to far exceed their original projections and they're way behind now on the schools. But there are a lot of traffic, so much of it's coming here. We still also, highway, the Maple Valley Highway is much of its two lanes and then it just gets to the mess at 405. I mean, it's, it's, we've got to do something about Highway 18. We also have other things, but it's a disaster. Now, the other concern with Hobart Isaguas Road and the fatalities are going to be some Saturday afternoon when I saw almost 100 people walking on the sides of that road from Poo Poo Point to a completely filled, Isaguas Park was completely filled with cars. There were more cars down even closer to town. I saw three people out on the field at that park and the whole thing was just a mess. That's where we're gonna get the fatalities and that's where we need to be, one of the things we need to be concerned about in this corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I would add, just to follow up on what you were saying around Poo Poo Point is there are projects that are on the low priority list that address some of the walking on the shoulder around there, crossing the highway at that location that the county was, was talking about. And also some redoing of the Poo Poo Point parking lot to make it a little bit more efficient and safe. So those, you'll find those project recommendations on the project list.
Hang on one second, because I'll clarify what you're saying.
Sorry, not project recommendations. You'll, you'll find those projects on the project list, they're just not on the recommended.
Right. And what you said earlier, I'd heard something a little different, that those are being considered from the, the King County Parks Department, that being kind of park, considered park project versus road project.
Yes.
Right? So, so they're involved in that side of that as well.
Right.
So clarify that. Okay. Connie?
I'm gonna start from there, even though I wasn't intending to. It was interesting going down the low priority list and seeing, safety, no, safety, no, safety, no, safety, no. And, and that didn't seem like it was a high priority, which is a little disconcerting because it seems like it should be the highest priority. It seems like the highest priority is how do we get more cars through, which to me is not a high priority. It's how to get the cars through safely and somewhat efficiently. But I'm gonna get back to that in a minute. You compared the city model to the model you ran, and I'm wondering if that is the newest city model that we have not seen yet? It was the old city model?
It was 2030 because we didn't have the...
Gotcha.
We don't have the 2040 yet.
So we, we do have a, we do have a new model. It just hasn't been...
Yeah. I'm managing that project, the concurrency model update, and we have not updated the model yet. We are in the process of, so we are still verifying some land use assumptions in there. And so that would be, it is being updated though.
So...
We don't have the 2040 numbers yet.
I'm not gonna dialogue on that. So I also saw that the model, in the AMP, talked about a reduction in efficiency because of all of the walkers and bikers. And I question that we are gonna have a slew of walking and biking at 7:00 AM, because I don't think we have a work center in this area, and even at 9:00 AM. And so I wonder about the inputs for the model for the AMP. That might be true for the PM peak, but I don't think it's true for the AM peak. I'm a little confused about whether the model includes the Newport lanes and whether your lines are sort of a euphemism for Newport and Front Street being used together as one thing. Because Newport Way carries a lot of this traffic that's going on to Isaguas Hobart Road, yet it doesn't seem to be addressed in the modeling. And I don't really understand how that capacity is entering into this model unless what you're giving us is just sort of a euphemism for both roads being analyzed at the same, same time. In the criteria for choosing the projects, I can see what you, what the criteria were. I, I wasn't able to understand the sort of priority order because it seemed like the priorities of getting people off the road were subordinate to getting more people through the road. And so I, I would like to understand who decided what the priorities for the criteria and their weights were. And then, again, in the model, because I'm actually sort of a model hound, in the IJR, there will be improvements to the north end of the road, but it seems how you didn't put any improvements into your model. It is showing status quo, when if you actually had improvements on the north end, it could substantively change your model. And so you wouldn't be having that metering effect any longer. So I don't know how you can make a lot of decisions if you don't include some improvements potentially from the IJR or some semblance of projects for improvement. Yet another parking study, I just about died, but you do also have to consider things like the impacts to the brew pub. If you take away all the parking along that road, then their outdoor seating becomes even less bearable and you're actually impacting the quality of Isaguas citizens and the businesses that are, that are in your town. And so I, I didn't see that in any of your criteria. The quality of life of the people who are using Old Town and our city seem to be just missing. So I don't know how to add that, but, okay, I got there. Safety, 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 removing cars low, oh, park and ride. Two years ago, I talked to Metro and a park and ride at 18 was under discussion. So I am not sure what happened. I know they didn't have the funding for it, but when I was talking to Metro about the incredible high capacity of our current park and rides, they basically said that was, that was something they were actively in the works with. So I would like to know what changed. Okay, that's it. I have more, of course.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else? All right. Any other comments after that?
I was a little bit confused about the model update and what, what modeling we used, and so it would be great to have that clarified at the next meeting, the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, sure.
Go ahead.
I have, just have a comment, which is similar, I think, to the public comments we heard, that I would like to see a little bit more information about the impact of potential ways to get less cars on the road or more people driving together or people, if there were incentives for people to van pool or work from home one day a week, some sort of thing like that, because I think that that, anecdotally, those sorts of things seem to have a very big impact. When the school is out, for example, has a big impact. So I would be interested in at least exploring those more fully.
Okay. And my thoughts are, I'll start a little bit on that, the Poo Poo Point piece. That is, in other places, we're talking about, you know, Isaguas and building our tourism and our attractions and those kinds of things, and that being one of our major attractions. And, and King County saying, well, that's a park issue, not a road issue. Somehow we have to, you know, deal with that because it is a safety issue for sure. And I was surprised at 6:30 this morning, when I was heading south on Isaguas Hobart Road, that I saw two bicyclists coming up, going north on there and I was like scared for them. But the other thing I saw also is that there's a, across from Poo Poo Point and a little to the north, there's a private piece of land there that says parking $5, that someone's opened up their little open area for making a little money. So private solutions tend to start popping up if, if we don't get them. But I, I'm concerned about taking care of one of the pieces that is an attraction and a good part of Isaguas in a way that we need to, if we need to bring the King County Parks into that discussion, I think that's the other partner that'd have to be in there if they're under the roads. So that's one of my concerns. One more? Go ahead.
It's just a comment. I guess I, at this point, I'm failing to see how this fits into all the concerns we have about regional traffic and if just spending 10 or 12 or $15 million on this stretch of corridor addresses the, how other issues are addressed. I'm, I'm still trying to figure out how all this fits in. It's just a, it's just a comment. I had similar thoughts about what Vicki said and what Connie said, but separately, I'm still trying to figure out how all this fits in because it's a very complicated problem. And I see this as a, sort of a thinly veiled attempt to get more cars through Isaguas. And maybe that's, maybe I'm wrong, but that's what it feels like to me because, yeah.
Could I, could I say a couple of things?
Sure.
A couple of points. One is, I think, when you, when we look at the Isaguas projects, when I think of them, I think of them as kind of localized access circulation improvements for Isaguas itself. I don't think of them as, as kind of projects that are serving the regional nature of the corridor. Because, and that's one reason you didn't see a slide up there that showed travel times along the corridor with the projects, because, or travel speeds, because the travel speeds don't increase significantly in the PM peak hour with those projects. It basically, you know, those projects are about side street access, about making some of those locations work a little bit better, not just during the peak hours, but during other times of the day that could benefit downtown Isaguas and so forth. I think the King County, I heard a number of comments about King County projects, and this is a joint project between King County and Isaguas. King County's not here. And I think this is your opportunity to engage them. And I think that'd be a missed opportunity if, if, if we don't somehow do that. Because I think there are some interesting things that didn't make the recommended list, And then, yeah, those were the points I wanted to make, so thank you.
All right. With that, we'll wrap this piece up for tonight. Those that can want to watch it again discussed on April 24th, put it on your calendars. All right? Okay. We'll go to item B here. AB 7535, Amendments to His Agonist Code Regarding Wireless Communication Facilities and Small Cell Design Guidelines. Keith, are you gonna give us a quick little overview of how we got to this point from previous ones, since a couple of these people on this committee weren't, weren't in on the first time we started talking about this topic in another, in a different way, but at least this topic?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So actually, somebody's, transpo guy, sorry. This yours?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah. You would miss that at some point. So actually, two of you haven't had this. Vicki's the only one that has, because this has already gone through PPC. So, so this evening, we have wireless communication facilities, small cell, and I'm gonna go through a quick presentation for you guys and talk about where we started, where we are tonight. And you see, you both, you've received two letters, one today and one yesterday, one from AT&amp;T and one from Verizon. And so we'll talk about that a little bit as well. So I figured we'd go through the, the five Ws here. So who are we talking about? We're talking about the wireless carriers. And what are we talking about? We're really talking about, so it's not a coverage issue. When the original section of the Wireless Communication Facility Code was written, it was written for macro cells. So the big towers up top high that create basically a web over your community so that you don't drop cell calls. And hopefully, none of you are still experiencing dropped cell calls. What this is about is really, it's, it's not coverage, it's capacity. So as we're all traveling around and streaming things on our phones and using a lot of data, what's happening is those bigger macro cells are straining to keep up with the demand that's being caused by current usage. And that usage is just expected to grow as we densify our communities and as we do more things on our mobile devices. And so what's being talked about is now creating a sub-network of smaller antennas that are more frequent, that will populate most of our rides away, major rides away, to provide us that capacity that we're all currently getting used to. And when, so right now, as you all know, well, as you two know, there was a franchise agreement for Verizon to provide small cell on Isaguas Falls City and Isaguas Pine Lake Roads. And so the first application came in and basically because it was in the right-of-way, it was being handled by the franchise agreement, but that's not really a great way to handle this. And so what we've got this evening is talking about changing the Chapter 18 to provide standards for these new facilities that are wanting to be located in our community. So I talked about why. Where, you know, so these things, these small cells can be within the right-of-way, they can either be on existing poles, whether they be light poles or utility poles, they can be structure-mounted, so they can be put on roofs or on sides of buildings, they can also be put on public property, things like parks. Hi, Stacy.
Do we have this presentation?
You do not have this presentation in your packet.
Hmm. That's unfortunate.
I will get you this presentation for you. I will get you this presentation for your, since I don't think we're going to be done tonight. So what do these things look like? They can look like a lot of different things. You know, what you generally have is an antenna and a radio box. And they can look anywhere from, these are some visual examples, these are some poles that were put up just for small cell facilities. And we'll talk about new poles versus retrofitting existing poles. And all of that will be part of the conversation. So one of the things that's complicated in Izuaq is we have a number of decorative poles in our community, whether it's Front Street, or Highlands, or Talis. Gilman are the shoeboxes. You know, when you get to South Cove, it looks more like Cobra Head. And then we have some more rustic fixtures in Old Town and up on Squawk. And so part of the conversation with the carriers is, is they want to put antennas on existing poles. You know, some of our poles can readily accept those antennas, and some are a little bit more difficult to put an antenna on. Some because of the decorative features, but some because of just the pole height. There's a certain height that the antennas want to be at so that they can maximize their So we've gone through PPC, and you have a recommendation for approval. This slide is really, it used to be a lot longer. It actually used to be two columns. But through working with the wireless carriers, these are the things that are the major issues which we are still not in alignment on. So I figured this is probably a good place for us to start a conversation. So right now, the proposed code identifies that there is a notification requirement for any Level 2 permit. That's in Section 1822070. So a Level 2 permit is basically a new pole. If you're going to put an antenna on an existing pole, that's not a Level 2 permit. But if you're going to erect a new pole with a new antenna on it, we consider that a Level 2 application, which we believe there should be notice to neighbors. We are requiring a pre-application meeting. One of the reasons for that is that we're allowing them to cluster a certain number of facilities in one application, up to 10. And so part of this is really an opportunity for staff to discuss, to understand the project that's coming forward, and to discuss any issues with the applicant before they actually make their application. So we think there's the likelihood that it could be complicated enough that a pre-application could help facilitate the permitting process. They are unhappy with our proposed fees, just to say that. Right now, we have changed something in the existing code. So the existing code, as I mentioned earlier, was written just for macro cells. It allowed them in single-family zones. Through our discussions, the administration feels like we do not need to continue to allow them in single-family zones. So right now, it is now listed as a prohibited use in single-family zones for macro towers. Not small, they can still go in the right-of-way on residential streets, but to put an 85-foot tall tower in a single-family zone, we took issue with. Small cells, right now, we're prohibiting new poles on Front Street. We can talk about that one. We are prohibiting on municipal poles. And Brett would be here, but he's dealing with an illness in his household. And then we talked about the decorative poles earlier, and I can talk about that and expand that, why that's a concern for us. And then the last item is, if they're going to put a new pole in, we have a maximum height of 25 feet. Some of the letters that came in today, we're asking for that to be either 35 or 40 feet. And we can talk about that. So these are really the big substantive issues in my mind. Now, the carriers may have some others they want to add to the list. There was another, if you looked through the letters we got today from AT&amp;T and Verizon, there are some small clarifications to make in the code. Like, for example, we used to distinguish utility poles differently than other poles, and then we collapsed that into just poles. But there's still some reference to utility poles in here. So, you know, there's definitely some things that we can clarify to make the code read better. And I've kind of noted those already. So that's what I've got. If you guys have questions, I'm more than happy to answer those now. Or I know there's representatives from the wireless community here that will probably also want to provide some comment this evening. So we can either do some now, or I can wait till later.
With the pre-application, so there is a cluster of 10 that's allowed at one batch. And is the issue that the carriers have with that, that they want to have more than 10?
No. So right now, we don't require pre-application meetings for a Level 0 or a Level 1. And what they're asking for is that the pre-application be limited to Level 2. And, you know, I think, part of the problem is, we don't know how many of these are coming, and we don't know what kind of complications are going to come up with these kind of permits. They're going to be brand-new for us. And so this is kind of a precautionary step for my department, is to kind of just ask them to come and sit down with us before they bring in an application, so that we can talk, we can see what they're asking, we can talk about it, we can maybe, if there's some questions staff have, they can ask those. So we actually see a pre-application meeting as a way to facilitate a faster permit, but they have asked for us to limit pre-application to Level 2.
And Level 2 would be only new poles?
New poles.
And just to clarify, that'd be for Level 0 and 1?
Yes. All applications would require a pre-app, is the way it's drafted.
Keith, the code, I have a couple of general questions. What are other jurisdictions doing around us, whereas they must be dealing with the same issues? And then the second is, how we came up with this code?
So I'll start with the second question, because the first one, I was drinking, and I think I missed half of it. This code, so I'm not a wireless communications expert. And, you know, unfortunately, my staff, who was going to work on this, she took a job in Colorado, so this fell into my lap. So as I started reading 20 or so municipal codes on small cells, I basically gravitated towards Redmond and San Antonio. I thought for them, they were clear, they were clean, and they were fairly concise. So, and our attorney, Ogden Murphy Wallace, works for Redmond as well. So there was some synergy, I think, with the Redmond code. At the time that we started this, that code was yet to be adopted, so it was a draft code when we started. What I would tell you is in front of you, or in your packet, started off as kind of that blend of Redmond and San Antonio, but where it is now is it's Redmond, San Antonio, and a lot of comments from the carriers. So I think they have provided a lot of guidance, and I think this document is a lot better than where it was when we started. As you can see from this list of eight, didn't mean we agreed on everything that was asked, but it is a much smaller list than where we started a couple of months ago.
And where are our neighbors on these type of codes, other than Redmond?
Where are our neighbors?
What's the status? I mean, we're not the first ones or the only ones dealing with this, right?
No, absolutely, no. Most of our neighbors have adopted codes already.
Okay.
And if not, they're working through them now. So everybody's in the same boat. We're actually a little later than I would want to be because of dealing with the moratorium. This was just put on the sideboard for a while.
And I'm assuming that there's not a, we're doing this because we want to, we're doing this because we have to provide facilities, and so we want to be able to manage it as well, right?
We want to provide the facilities because that's a service our community, both residents and businesses, want. Right now...
But we have to provide too, right?
And we do.
Okay.
Yes. And, you know, right now, the only tool that we have to really regulate this, because our wireless code was macro cell-only, really, all we have to regulate this is the franchise agreement. And that's not a great tool. And if they choose a location, like on the side of a building, or roof of a building, or on like a city park, franchise agreement doesn't apply. It's only if it's in right-of-way. Now, most of these will be in right-of-way, because that's where the users are. We're in our cars, we're, you know, we're figuring out, we're using MapQuest to figure out where we're supposed to be going. So that's where they want them to be. But there could be locations on private property as well. And right now, we don't have any standards for that.
Thanks.
Okay. Just as a reminder, we did one franchise tax agreement last year, where this went through, because at that point, realizing we didn't have any code yet.
Yes.
And so we went through that full franchise tax agreement very painstakingly, because we were cautious, because we didn't know what things even looked like when we were talking about them, right? And so we worked through all that, and trying to get codes so we can get some consistency and some standards and ease of processing these, as they're going to be coming in more and more than just the one occasional thing.
Well, and we had the one from Verizon. We know Verizon wants to do another one, I think, on East Lake Sam. AT&amp;T was kind of spooling up for a deployment, and then they've kind of backed off, but I assume they're coming back sometime soon. So it is a need.
It's not really a question, but I think you're going to go to public comment. And so I wanted to put something out, just in case there is any public comment in response to this concern that I have. And that's that we have, so it's the first time we've seen this code. PPC saw it, but the council hasn't seen it. And then we have letters that need to be responded to. For me, not sure I'm comfortable just having oral responses. I think that written responses are better. And so I'm, as you indicated earlier, probably most interested in having this come back to Land and Shore. And so to the extent that that's a huge issue from particularly the carriers, that when they come up to speak, then I just thought they might have an opportunity to respond to that. A suggestion to come back next month.
And when you said Land and Shore, I know you meant infrastructure.
Oh, sorry. Either way, either place would be fine.
I'm changing my...
Yeah, I'm in both.
Right. And that is something I know for myself, kind of building on that as you're reading through this the first time. And this is, you know, there's some technicalities to this and things unknown that we're not used to dealing with. So, you know, when I read it, it's like, well, I think I know what that means, but sometimes I'm not quite sure, right? So, okay. With that, go ahead.
When you were talking about probably these will be in the right-of-way, am I right also that one of the reasons is because of smart cars that will need, as cars get smarter, they'll need to use these also?
I'm going to let them answer that question.
Okay, thanks.
Emily, do you have anything you want to add before you go? All right. So I think we have a few folks from the public that want to comment. You may get technical.
If you're ready.
All right. Just try to be concise and say what you can, just clearly and succinctly, and that we can all understand. And let us know who you're from, please.
Good evening. My name is Carol Tagayen. I'm Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. And first, thank you for the opportunity to address you and make some comments this evening. We did submit a letter. Thank you to Mr. Niven and his staff, because we've worked closely with them over the last few months. I really appreciate the work that they've done. AT&amp;T considers this very important, whatever is the outcome, because we're looking for something workable. As you know, people today rely on their wireless cellphones. About 50% of households are now wireless-only. And I heard you mention earlier about how it would sure be nice if people would work from home. Well, they're going to need their cellphones to work in order to be able to do that, so we need to make sure that we give them good coverage where they need it. People need their coverage wherever they are, if they're on the street, at home, in the park, on the trail. It's also very important for safety, because we're seeing that over 70% of 911 calls are now coming from wireless devices. So with cell service, as Mr. Niven mentioned, these are about capacity. So although we have coverage, if all the coverage is used and we don't add capacity, it will impact your cellphone usage as well. So what we're looking to do is build out a new kind of network, the small cell network, which uses smaller equipment, less obtrusive, and will add that capacity in more pointed locations where it's needed. Not necessarily just building it everywhere, because where we have coverage that isn't at capacity, we're fine, but really putting it in locations where we have the need for capacity. I think you mentioned something about if you were to delay this and take more time, would we, carriers, be okay with it? For AT&amp;T, that's fine. There are some significant issues we'd like you to consider, that we've already talked to staff about. And so we'd like to have you to have that time that you need to take a look at that. And I think there was one more thing that council member, oh, about smart cars. So the idea with small cell is that by putting in that pinpointed additional capacity, it gives us higher speeds on our wireless network. And eventually, that we will build upon that, continue to build upon that, to eventually get us to where 5G is, which is super-fast and low latency. And that's when it will really help with automated vehicles, so. Question?
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again, and we will continue to be a part of your process. And we're here to answer questions.
I'm Gina Del Giorgio with Verizon Wireless. Carol did most of my work for me. I just want to say thank you for taking the time. I know that we've been working with you guys as well on the code. You did a great job on your presentation. So I just want to say thank you, and obviously, the need, like Carol said, I mean, those are all the same talking points that I have. So if you guys have any questions, we're here to answer them. Take the time that you need to review the code. We've been working with cities, we're all at the same meetings, all the carriers, working with the cities to try to streamline your process, our process, because it is coming, and it's coming fast. So we appreciate your help in trying to make it streamlined, because everyone is using more wireless units, doing more. And it's just, we really appreciate your help in taking the time to try to improve the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This will not be 5G, and my question is about when the technology improves, do you need to put a new box, a new device on the pole? Or can you use that existing box and update the technology that way?
Well, we're still working on what the 5G technology looks like. We're hoping that we can upgrade it, but we also may need to add additional poles to the infrastructure. It's going to, it might take more poles. So we're still working on what the technology looks like.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Pellegrini. I'm with Wireless Policy Group, representing AT&amp;T as well. Carol talked about the need, and I just wanted to talk about some of the things where we're not exactly, where we still have concerns. We've really enjoyed working with staff. We have come a long way, and we really appreciate all the efforts. From a network perspective, there's four major things that we're still working through. And one of them's where the small cell facilities would be prohibited. And that includes along Front Street and with city-owned poles. And along Front Street, it's a place that's economically viable, it's... It's a hub. It's where people go to connect. It's where people go for work meetings or to go to work. It's where people go to visit friends and family. I know from experience, some people come down off the ski mountain and go to Front Street and get caught up on their emails where they didn't have great connectivity, where they were spending the day in the mountains. It's like the first stop where people can stop and get a warm cup of coffee and a hot chocolate and feed your kids and get caught up. And I know that's what many people do. I've done it myself. So I think there's a fear of maybe the unknown of what a small cell site would look like on Front Street. You want to keep the visual character and the aesthetic beauty of the area. And we just want to make sure that it's stressed, that there are multiple options for locating these small cells, including putting the coax and the antennas in the pole itself. And with the equipment, we can make the base wider and show all the equipment that way as well. We work with pole manufacturers every day. They're very interested in making up, and so that we aren't creating, we're blending in with the existing environment. That's our main goal, is to blend in with the existing environment while providing this coverage and capacity. So also regarding city-owned towers and city-owned, sorry, city-owned light poles. The benefit, there's many benefits of going on city-owned light poles. And we do pole attachment agreements with many jurisdictions. And the benefits are that it limits the need for new towers or poles. And it also allows us to blend in with the existing infrastructure that's already part of the lay of the land. And oftentimes, it's more aesthetically pleasing because it's not creating a new, a need for a new pole. We can paint to match. We can, they're small, they're high, and they're not usually in the line of sight. And we also would be batching these, and small cells, so they would get some kind of review at least at the beginning. So the other thing with the pole attachment agreements is that there's, if we don't have a pole attachment agreement with the city of Issaquah, we would not be allowed to go on the city-owned light poles already. So we are preferring and hoping that we can handle it through a pole attachment agreement and not necessarily have it in a code. Because if the city of Issaquah decides, like many jurisdictions have, that's a good viable option for these small cells, that we wouldn't have a pole attachment agreement and then a code that says we can't go on city-owned light poles. Also regarding macro cells and residential zones, we need the macro cells as much as we need the small cells. They provide the same benefits that they provide in residential codes as they do in commercial zones as well, including safety, business, and connectivity for first responders. And then also today, I think was the first time we saw a new height limit of 25 feet for new poles. And for our network, for AT&amp;T, it's just not feasible as a policy for us to go below 25 feet. So we would like, the existing code reads 45 feet, and we'd like that to continue so that we have more options with the network. And so if, if we have to go lower, we might sometimes need new poles. And the 45 feet just gives us more options for aesthetics as well. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Atkins. I'm an attorney with Davis Wright Tremaine, and I'm here speaking on behalf of T-Mobile. I did provide a letter and an information packet by email to the committee members. If you did not receive it, I do have hard copies here as well. It was sent to you by email this afternoon. So in, in the letter, we're focusing on, really on the three issues that are of the most concern to T-Mobile. My colleagues from the industry have already touched on several of them. And I think in your, in this slide that Mr. Niven prepared and in your packet, it really does a good job of kind of summarizing for you the policy choices that you have to make. And the, I guess, one point I want to emphasize is that the, our existing networks are, the macro cell is a fundamental part of those existing networks. It's, it's a primary way that we get coverage. And we are still going to need macro cells going forward into the future. So one of, one of our concerns with this code is the prohibition on macro facilities in residential zones. In most communities, there are provisions that allow a macro facility to be placed on a non-residential property within a residential zone. So typically churches, schools, or city-owned properties. And if there's, if there's not some mechanism to allow for filling in coverage gaps within residential areas, which is an area, a type of area, that there's increasing demand for wireless services because we're all using our devices in our homes. If there is no opportunity to close a coverage gap, if one exists in a residential zone, there is a risk that the city's code is going to be inconsistent with the requirements of the Communications Act. So we wanted to be sure that you consider that issue. The other two major issues that we have concerns with have to do with the prohibition on new poles on Front Street and the prohibition on using municipal poles or the lack of access to municipal poles. And the, the driving force is that all of the carriers are going to need flexibility to cite small cells where they're needed. And it's, it's to the benefit of the citizens of Issaquah to have as many types of opportunities to do that as possible so that we can be sure that we provide the services where they're needed. So Front Street and Gilman both obviously are high priority because they're, they have a lot of vehicle traffic, they have a lot of pedestrian traffic, there's a lot of retail activity. When I was driving to Issaquah today, I took the opportunity to get off at the 900 exit and go down Gilman towards Front Street. So I drove that corridor between 900 and Front Street. And I did not see a single PSC pole in that corridor. The only type of pole I saw on the right of way are the municipal, the concrete municipal light standards. And that is an example of a type of facility that if you look in the, the slides and the packet that we provided, and we've actually produced some photo sims of how the T-Mobile box would look on those poles. T-Mobile has a unified enclosure with the antennas and the radios, all the equipment inside as one box. It's roughly three cubic feet. And that, that box, you can change out the antennas and the radios inside that box and maintain the box on the pole. I can't guarantee, we would never have to change the box, but there is some flexibility to change out equipment within the box. So, I mean, I think that's an example of the, the impact of eliminating access to municipal poles means that in order to provide small cell service on that segment of Gilman, we only have the option of a new pole, which we would be limited, currently we would be limited to 25 feet in height, which T-Mobile agrees is not, not sufficient. Or potentially having to go to private landowners and try to put small cells on the retail buildings in the area. But as we know, the, most of that retail development is, it's back from the street. There are parking lots between the buildings and the street, and it may not achieve the objectives that we're trying to achieve with providing the, the small cells to improve the coverage. I'm going to stop there. We would encourage the council committee to take additional time to look at the issues. We think they're important and would appreciate your consideration of our comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It is fascinating to hear that our efforts to underground in order to get rid of poles is creating the need to put things on poles. Ironic, isn't it? So having last summer gone around town and taken a lot of photos of different buildings and corridors in our town, we basically have pole pollution. It is rare in this town where you can get a vista of the mountains without some random jutting out of several poles that aren't in any balance whatsoever when you're trying to look at Cougar or Tiger or Squawk. And this has just happened over time. Nobody ever considered the holistic aesthetics of poles. And so those tend to be the taller poles, which would be over 25 feet tall, 45 feet. Doesn't seem like it's small cell anymore. That seems like it's broadcasting quite heavily and not the narrow focus that I consider to be small cell. And in listening, each company wanting to put their own small cell components on pole after pole after pole is disconcerting to say the least. So would every municipal pole end up with a cluster of small cells because of each of these companies needing to locate? Seems inefficient, and I would say the cell people seem to need to get together to consolidate their services somehow, because this is craziness. In our own life of decision-making, large towers in neighborhoods has become a bone of contention. And so if you wanted to raise the level of review so that you would have to have a neighborhood meeting every time a new cell tower was put into a neighborhood, so that would be, you know, at least a level three review, that might be something, so at least the neighborhood could, and Development Commission could talk about these, these big cell towers. I think you need to have pre-app. And I agree with a level two review for new poles. I want level review two for an abundance going in all at the same time. I think the community needs to understand what is happening with the wireless in the town, and it's an education experience for them. Expensive is good. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Amy, there you go.
And in the older neighborhoods where undergrounding of these utilities is maybe not going to ever happen, and they keep hanging more and more stuff on the poles. And, you know, it's, it's the phone company and the cable companies, they got a lot of their, their stuff and is hanging off the wires and all of that. So it's getting, getting awful cluttered. I'm, and I'm curious what, what, why the, the issue with the city not wanting them on their, their poles. But I think that's what introduced a whole bureaucracy that they don't want to have to deal with when they want to have some flexibility for the city. And then are they in the, are they then committed to having to find something, another place for the, the wireless company if the city decides that they do not want that certain pole in a certain location? Is it what's going to be the burden on the city? And I'm curious about decorative poles, but I guess this discussion will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last person, or is that look like it? There you go. One more.
Hi, Jennifer Taylor. I'm with Reica Consulting. I'm a site act consultant for Verizon. And I just wanted to add on to Gina from Verizon answered Victoria Hunt's question about 5G. And I just wanted to mention that one of the reasons why we're asking for additional more than 25 feet height is that if we can go a little bit taller, that gives us a little bit more space to work with when we do find out what 5G needs are. It does give us a little bit extra space to, to use in the future. And other than that, I just wanted to also say thank you to Keith for some of the clarifying descriptions and definitions in the code. I think that'll be helpful for those like myself who are trying to interpret it when I'm out there, what exactly is meant by poles and decorative poles and those things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last? All right. So public comment's over. So, discussion.
Well, the, so I think my comments I made earlier favor, but coming back with the issues in the letters we received from the carriers responded to in writing to the committee. And I, I guess these eight issues that are, they're still outstanding issues between the city and the carriers, that would be nice to have that laid out in a memo so we understand why the city's recommending, administration's recommending what it is. And anything else that was brought up tonight during their comments? That be addressed to? I don't know if there's anything new.
I have two questions. So the, my first question is about the municipal poles, and I know that Brett is not here, but I wondered if you could speak to his reasons for not wanting, or wanting the small cells prohibited on the municipal poles.
I will do my best to channel Brett, and I'll look to his boss to maybe add something if she can. So here's the story. So this is, this is about trade-offs. Because, you know, if you allow them on municipal poles, and most municipalities do allow them on municipal poles. So this was a really difficult, because we don't know what this is, what the network's going to look like at the end of the day. It's hard to say, I want that or that. So we had to do some kind of crystal balling to say, okay, you know, if we allow them on municipal poles, what are the downsides of that? Versus if we don't allow them on municipal poles, as you heard from the carriers, they're going to have to put additional poles in. And those additional poles, you know, add to that clutter in the right of way and all those kind of things. What I understand from Public Works' operation, their concern about having private facilities on a municipal pole is in cases of a pole strike, where you now have to disengage the power from the pole to, you know, work on the pole, you know, having someone else's facilities that's going to be powered as well on those poles is a concern for Public Works' operations. You know, because we knew this was an issue, and what I want to say is, there has been a lot of conversations between the carriers and the city so far through this process. And one of, and we knew this was an issue for them from the beginning. And so what we, you know, what we facilitated was a meeting with, with Brett and Bennett and the carriers to really talk this issue through. And I unfortunately had to leave that meeting early, but what I understood is Brett asked for some more technical information from the carriers, and they have not provided that. So we're still standing firm, I think, on at least the administration's position that we're not keen on allowing private facilities on municipal poles.
Thank you.
And so then I'm, I would request that the prohibited municipal poles, reasoning that we're given in writing at our next meeting can include Brett's position, please.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And my overall comment on this is that as I was listening in PPC and also with the carriers today, there are a lot of creative options, and I imagine that there will be more and more options as the technology evolves. The previously The, previously it's been discussed that these can be put in things like benches, or they can be put in the blinking walk beacons, and they can be put on the side of buildings. They can be put many other places. And I imagine that as the technology gets smaller and they find more and more creative ways to make these devices bit into their surroundings, then there will be better and better solutions. And this code is really specific to poles, which is why I'm, I, having worked through a similar list also in the PBC, I'm comfortable with many of these, these issues that have been addressed.
Okay. And my issues, I guess, the first one was, was did we have a time crunch here? That we, you know, we had to act now, and I'm hearing that, that we don't, so that we can take a little more time to make sure we get it right. We're trying to write some new code here in, in an industry we're learning about as we go. So, industry folks don't seem to have a problem with that. You, the city, I'm sure, would like to have it done as soon as possible, because once we have it encoded, we're protected, we have it, you know, codified. But I think one more month probably wouldn't hurt us if we just kind of did, did that and got things clarified. If it was another six months, maybe I would worry about it. But another month, I think I'm, we're okay with. So, timing seems okay with me, and taking a little more time to make sure we get it right when we, it's not just an A or B answer. It sounds like the city staff has been working really well with, with the industry and, and working towards that. So, I think that with another 30 days, hopefully that work will continue, and you can get some good solutions that work for everybody. For myself, when there's a conflict and we want to maintain a position, and someone says that that doesn't work, I'd really have to understand why that absolutely can't work. So, and I'm hearing things now that are a little confusing for me, like when we're asking for poles that have to be 45 feet, and then we can keep them low and on the side of buildings and at different heights on. Municipal poles are very seldom, you know, over 25 feet. So, I'm, I'm hearing some conflict on what's really needed, because if you need municipal poles, I don't know how many of those we have that are 45 feet. So, that, those kinds of things that I'm getting a little confused on just when you get into the technical stuff, right? And, and you mentioned about technology change, and maybe these will get, you know, maybe two, three years from now, they will be much less obtrusive. We're worried about them now being very obtrusive, and the concern of replication or duplicity, if we have six companies needing the same thing, and there are lots of these per company, and then you multiply that by six, because every, every company needs the same coverage, because we all just have to choose a provider, then that looks like we could be absolutely overwhelmed with the number of these small cell sites if everybody needs, you know, every company comes in and needs 200 sites, and now we need 1,200 sites, because there's six companies that need it. That's, that's a lot. So, that, that part concerns me a little bit, for sure. So, why, we need to get it right. So, I guess that's, the bottom line is, let's take these, work with them, back up the whys, and if, if we need to stay strong on something, that's just a convenience, one thing. If we're putting in something in code that makes the system absolutely not work, you know, then that's not a good thing to do. We got to make sure we can allow something that will operate. So, I'm hearing from everybody is pretty clear. Take, take a little time, sort through it a little bit more, come back with some written down reasons on why things work or don't work, and discuss it again next month. Sound good? Sound like, you know, with that? Okay?
Okay.
All right. That will wrap up this issue tonight. Okay, moving right along. Thank you all very much for coming. Appreciate your work with the city, too. All right. Next item is AB 7554, ratification of Lake Washington Cedar Sammamish Watershed 8 Chinook Salmon Conservation Plan update. There he is.
Good evening.
Mr. York.
I'm Bob York. I'm utility manager working for Sheldon. I don't get to speak at council or council infrastructure meetings very often, so I'm glad to be here tonight. This is one of several topics I'll be up talking to you about. So, the next few minutes, we are going to provide you a briefing on, related to Agenda Bill 7554. The request is for council to adopt a resolution that ratifies the 2017 update to the Lake Washington Cedar Sammamish Watershed Chinook Salmon Conservation Plan, otherwise known as RIAA8, or some people call it WIRA8, but Jason can tell you how that evolved. Both the plan and the resolution are included in the Agenda Bill packet. Issaquah has a rich history of involvement in RIAA8 and participation since the Chinook Salmon was first listed in, in the Endangered Species Act in 1999. Jason has some information specific to Issaquah and how we've done projects over the years, which is a good background. Most recently, council authorized a 10-year interlocal agreement in 2015 to continue the city's participation in the, in RIAA8 salmon recovery efforts. And we're one of 28 local governments to collaborate with, on this effort throughout the Lake Washington Sammamish Cedar, and also Puget Sound communities are involved. So, with, before I start repeating what Jason has prepared to, in a presentation, I'll introduce Jason Mulvaugh Kuntz. Did I say that right? Close?
Yeah.
Okay. Hyphenated last name. He's the salmon recovery manager for RIAA8, and he's got a great presentation for you to observe. Jason? Let me see. Here's a folder here. Damn, like, you know. I'm showing my relative newness with this process. And if you leave it there, I'll have my other presentations ready.
Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, PowerPoint.
All right. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate the introduction. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, thanks for having me tonight. I appreciate the chance to brief you all on, on this effort. And I was here about two years ago before the council to renew the interlocal agreement that we had at that time, to continue the salmon recovery effort for Chinook salmon in the watershed after we'd been at it for 10 years. And very happy that all 28 local governments were interested in continuing the effort and saw value, and, but now I'm back before you, because the next step was to update the plan after 10 years of implementation. So, I have a plan that's been updated to bring before you for consideration to ratify as your plan for salmon recovery in the city, as well as the rest of the watershed. And my hyphenated last name goes very well with the watershed, as you can tell, the Lake Washington Cedar Sammamish Mulvaugh Kuntz is, it just kind of goes together. So, if you guys aren't aware, the term RIA, or W-R-I-A, it's just a very bureaucratic term for a watershed. It means water resource inventory area. It's created by the state back in the late 90s when they wanted to do water resource planning. And then when Chinook salmon were listed in 1999, because it's an ecological boundary, it was adopted for salmon recovery as well. It made sense ecologically, so that's why we've adopted it. I like to actually say the name of the watershed. I think it means a lot more to people. It's more place-based and all that. So, this is the watershed. Give you a kind of an orientation to it. We, we are the most populated watershed in the entire state, so there's a lot of local governments, there's a lot of people here, which makes salmon recovery both a challenge and an opportunity. It's a challenge because we have so many people here and so much impact to the habitat, but it's an opportunity as well, because we do have all those people to try and become advocates for salmon recovery and really, you know, take this on and make it of value. The shaded areas, the, the colors on the map denote priorities, so the dark green areas are our highest priority areas for habitat restoration and protection. You'll notice Issaquah is smack dab in one of those dark green areas there at the kind of south end of Lake Sammamish. And then the lighter green areas are what we call Tier 2, and those are slightly less important areas, just because Chinook don't use those all the time, every year. They're what we call kind of satellite habitat areas that we want to continue to restore, but they're not quite as high a priority because of the kind of infrequent use by Chinook for spawning. However, if something were to happen catastrophically to a darker area, Tier 1 area, those are areas that the Chinook might be able to use as alternate places to spawn. The rest of the watershed that's kind of taupe or gray area is, is the more urbanized portion of the watershed, a lot more of the developments there. Chinook don't use those lower tier streams, those lower lowland streams to spawn, so we don't really focus a lot of effort or resource on habitat restoration there. However, you'll notice that the lake shore, the Sammamish River, Lake Washington lake shore, the ship canal, all the way up along the marine near shores is also that dark green color, and that's for the juvenile Chinook, the babies. After they hatch out of the gravel and the river systems and are migrating out of the watershed, they use those shallow water shoreline areas in the Sammamish River as a migratory pathway. They need shallow water for feeding and for refuge from predators as they grow bigger and, and on their way out of the watershed. So, we prioritize work in the shoreline areas as well. And we have two populations of Chinook in our watershed. We have a cedar population and a Sammamish population. I call the cedar population our right-handed or right-finned fish, because they come in through the Ballard locks there, and they make a right-hand turn at Lake Washington, and they go on up into the Cedar River to spawn. Sammamish population takes a left at Lake Washington. They go on up into the Sammamish River, some of the streams there, Bear Creek, Little Bear Creek. Many continue on through Lake Sammamish and on up into Issaquah Creek here where you are. So, real quick timeline of the effort. Again, like I mentioned, 1999 was when Chinook were listed under the Endangered Species Act. That's the time when the jurisdictions kind of got galvanized around this idea. I think there was a concern about what the ESA might mean in terms of obligation by the jurisdictions, potential lawsuit if there were take calls made. And so at the time, I think the jurisdictions also felt that this made more sense to do together than it did for each individual jurisdiction to take on. Salmon don't respect political boundaries, so if one jurisdiction, the other were not doing anything, then the relative value of what that one jurisdiction's doing may be completely undone by another. So, it really was a regional issue that the jurisdictions recognized and felt like they needed to take a regional solution. So, they came together under an interlocal agreement that cost-shared the work to develop a recovery plan, and that really was a way of telling the federal government, this is what we in this local community understand about our desire to recover Chinook salmon, basically letting us chart our own course, whereas if we hadn't done that, the federal government would come in and tell us how to do the work and, and tell us what we needed to do. So, it really was a way to, to take ownership and control of the issue as well. The recovery plan took about four years to write and was finished in 2005, and we began implementing it 2006. And like I said, I came back here in 2015 after we'd been through 10 years of implementation, could tell you about the progress, lessons learned, challenges moving forward, and the next task was to update that plan. Given all that information, we wanted to bring new information to bear. We didn't address climate change in 2005. We wanted to address that. We wanted to update our project list, all of those things. So, we've renewed that plan over the last 20 months or so and finished it at the end of last year, and have been talking with all of our partners about ratifying it individually, as you did with your 2005 plan. Real quickly, on terms of the Chinook salmon populations themselves, we do track their status annually, so it kind of tells us, how are they doing? How are the fish doing? And we do that with adult returns, so we track the fish coming back, and that's the, the kind of left-hand slide there as you look at the screen. And you'll notice populations fluctuate drastically year to year to year, and they've been pretty low. We have not hit that 10-year target, that red line there, very frequently. However, I will say that the last year's return that's not on this graph, because the data literally just came in about a month ago, is good. We, we got over 2,000, so that's the, the best return we've had since we started tracking back in 2000. So, it was just over 2,000. So, what I like to say is essentially that's giving us the sign that salmon are willing to come back. They, there, there is a chance, if we continue with this work, that they, they will come back if we give them half a chance.
And that's for the cedar?
That's for the cedar, right. And we do the same for the Sammamish as well. Cedar population's a slightly more of a higher priority, because it's an all-wild fish population. There's no hatchery influence on it, whereas in Issaquah Creek, there's a, there's a hatchery that you all know, and there's, there's, can be, there's hatchery influence on that population. And we're, we're working to try to build the, the wild population up to a point where it's sustainable on its own, and they can come back in the numbers that we don't necessarily have to have a hatchery to supplement them, but we would have enough fish coming back that they can do, be sustainable. Now, adult returns are not the best indicator for us in terms of how we're doing, because adults leave the watershed and they spend about four years out in the ocean. A lot of different things can happen to them out there that we have no control over. So, we track their returns, because ultimately, that's really what we want to see happen. But the juvenile outmigrant numbers are actually what we track a little bit better to kind of get a sense of how well we're doing on the restoration side for habitat, and that's what you see on the right side here. And you'll notice that that graph has actually got a nice trend upward to it, in that we're seeing a lot more juvenile salmon being produced by the watershed, which we think is a pretty good indication that the habitat quality is, is improving. We're able to support pretty good numbers going out. The challenge is, we want not just all, there's two different sizes of juveniles. There's fry, which are the real small guys, and there's par, which are the slightly bigger guys. They spend more time in the river system, getting bigger. A bigger fish survives better when it gets out into the ocean, so we want more of the bigger fish. The challenge is, with these numbers, the majority of them are the smaller fish. So, we're trying, and what that means is, we need to restore more of the areas in the rivers and streams for the fish to hang out, spend time, grow bigger. Right now, they don't have a lot of that opportunity. A lot of our floodplains and shoreline areas are hardened, and the streams are really kind of big flumes that just send them out really quickly, and often they don't survive quite as well as they would if they were bigger. So, in context, our plan is a chapter of the Puget Sound Regional Salmon Recovery Plan. Our watershed is one of 14 chapters. So, we nest into that bigger regional recovery plan, and then that plan is a cornerstone of the Puget Sound Recovery Action Agenda. That's the bigger, broader effort to recover all of Puget Sound. That's water quality, that's shellfish, it's, it's salmon, it's all those things. So, we're squarely within that, that plan as well, so it's well-nested, integrated. And then we focus on three things in our plan. We focus on those, the capital projects, the habitat restoration and protection work, but we recognize just doing projects isn't going to make us successful. We need to make sure that our land use policies and regulations and the way that we develop our communities supports the work we're trying to do in terms of the project. So, we really have, we have some land use regulation recommendations and planning recommendations in the plan for all of our partners to consider as they are doing their own municipal regulatory updates or planning work. We'd love them to integrate these things or consider these things as they're doing that. And then outreach and education. Like I said before, we kind of have an obligation here in our watershed with so many people to try and raise awareness, build a constituency that's supporting salmon recovery, make them aware that salmon are an icon for this area. If we lose them, we really lose something of ourselves. There are a ton of people moving here that don't have that understanding that salmon are part of the, the culture here, and that there are salmon in our backyard streams in, in some areas, and, and that that's a real strong value. And so, we're really trying to promote education and outreach programs that, that help support that. We've accomplished a lot over the last 10, 12 years. A lot of the work has obviously been focused on stream areas or, or lake shorelines, and we've actually been able to accomplish quite a bit, but we need to do a lot more in order to make sure that, that Chinook can come back. But those are some pretty decent numbers there. And the update. So, the update really builds on the lessons that we've learned, adds that climate change element. Like I said before, we never had habitat restoration goals in the previous plan, so we could never really respond to our decision-makers when they ask, well, how much more do we have to do, or how far are we, you know, towards our goal? And we, we always had unsatisfactory answers like, well, we've, you know, implemented X percent of the projects that we said we needed to do, but we didn't really have a sense of what that meant on the ground. And that's largely because at the time in 2005, people didn't want to say, X acres of habitat is enough. They did, because nobody really knew what was enough. So, we've said after 10 years of doing this work, we can put some targets out there. We, we have a sense of how much we need to try and do, but we're not going to say enough's enough. They're just, they're working targets, so they're goals. And they're, they're challenging goals, but they're within the realm of reality. So, we tried to make sure that we were, we were pushing ourselves, but we weren't making totally unrealistic goals. And then we, we tried to kind of consolidate all the information into 20 really clear, concise recovery strategies, so that anybody could concise recovery strategies so that anybody could kind of pick up our plan, look at it, and figure out exactly what needed to happen in the watershed and where in the watershed and for what life stage of the salmon. So, it was much easier to understand what we were trying to get done and where and when. And then we revised our project list. A lot of our projects have either become unfeasible, or they've changed in scope, or we've got a lot of new opportunities, and so we spent a lot of time working with partners around the region to renew that project list. And we had a lot of really unclear projects, a lot of projects that were, that kind of said, "Hey, go do good stuff in this entire reach of the stream," and we wanted to get a little more specific than that. So, I'm happy to say that we've reduced the total project number from 700 to about 350, and the projects are much more well-defined and clear in the new list. And then we added a monitoring and assessment plan. We feel like we need to really be strong on tracking our progress and being able to report to our partners, to our funders, to the public on progress and how we're doing, and understand on a more regular way if we need to change course. So, our funding in terms of Issaquah, you guys are a cost-share partner, one of 28 local governments in the watershed that pay an annual cost share to support this work. And in total, since 2001, you guys have contributed nearly $160,000. And in terms of capital grant funding that you've received to implement projects in your city and your jurisdiction, you've received almost $3.5 million of capital money through this body. And what has that work been? Well, you're probably very familiar with several of these projects, and we focused a lot in Issaquah on stream-side work, the riparian areas, trying to do some in-stream channel complexity work. A couple of the big projects to note are the intake dam removal, which was a significant barrier to upstream migration for fish. Getting that thing out of the way, now fish can get up there, which, you know, they hadn't really been able to reliably get up there for, it was like 50, 60 years. Now, we're seeing 45-pound Chinook 11 miles up the stream system. It's pretty amazing. So, that was great. We've done a lot of work upstream from Issaquah. The county's put in a lot of money on habitat protection, so that habitat was sitting there waiting for them to get to, and so now it's great to see that happening. And then, within the city itself, several projects, you know, Squawk Valley Park, Confluence Parks, the Juniper Street Park area, Lower Lewis Creek on the lake shoreline, and then most recently, the Salmon Bay Nature Park. We're all received funding through our grant program. And here's a map that Bob helped provide, just kinds of gives you within your jurisdiction where those projects are, and you'll see, you know, a lot of these projects that I just mentioned on this map itself, and several of the future projects that I think you guys are intending to do. And Issaquah's been an amazing partner in the past about really pushing and trying to get a lot of these projects done. Carrie Rittland was an excellent partner when he was here with the city, and he did a lot of great work to integrate a lot of the city programs, to integrate their priorities and focus on certain projects that got a lot of multiple benefits done. So, we're excited to continue to work with the city, Bob and Sheldon and yourselves, on implementing future work, and I'll take any questions if you guys have them.
Comments?
Oh, and I will note that Councilmember Hunt is our new representative to the Salmon Recovery Council, and she and I were just at a meeting earlier today, so that was her first meeting. So, glad to have her aboard as well and kind of getting her up to speed on that effort.
Thank you.
I heard you came from that meeting to this meeting. Excellent.
We have a request for submission of a grant on the agenda bill for Monday, or to RIA8, so timely, timely meeting.
All right. Any public comment?
I'm going to admit, I didn't read it for once. So, some of my concerns are sort of the Army Corps and my recollection of this group talk a lot about consolidating mitigation in larger areas. And in the city of Issaquah, that might be something that would be good for Chinook, but I'm a little cautious because we have all kinds of other habitat that goes within the city of Issaquah that will not work well if we do all of our mitigation, say, in the state park or outside in King County, and I am not eager to support that line. We have plenty of territory within our own city where mitigation should be, even if they seem isolated as compared to pushing them toward a larger project. So, that's just, that's just one. I'm excited to know that the city is working on a new list of projects that will continue this effort to improve water quality in potentially the Lakes of Mamish and the varying streams. Right now, we have basically run out of all of our projects, and so they're trying to figure out a system-wide plan for supporting this effort. And I've talked, I've heard it talked about, but I haven't seen it come to you all. So, big progress here, it's good. If we could continue the city focus and fund as much as possible all those projects that continue the improvement, great.
Thank you.
That's in there, right? Sequestry.
Not directly, but I understand.
Just the emphasis on the health of the small fish has really been something that's, I think, is almost like new, is really figured that out. And that's, we can get the big fish, or the fish getting here, but the average size of king salmon is, Chinook is definitely smaller, and that's not, that's just a whole West Coast problem, and that's getting back to those areas where the little fish got to get bigger starting earlier. That's system-wide, so.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nothing to say? All right. Go ahead. Come on. It's ecosystem.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I think that salmon are so iconic to the region, but also to Issaquah, they're part of our symbol for the city, and the options here, as far as I understand it, are really to support ratifying the plan or to not be a partner of this regional effort for salmon recovery. And salmon recovery is, it will take a regional effort, so that makes good sense, and I'm in support of the updating of the plan.
Go ahead.
Unless you have comments.
I have a comment. Yeah, I want to, just quickly, can we go back to the slide with the big map? So, what I didn't understand and define was what's the white area, which is a lot of Issaquah and then up in Woodinville, that I don't see a white defined. We have light green, dark green, you know, the taupe, which is incorporated areas, city boundaries, but Issaquah and Woodinville, Bothell and stuff are white.
There's, I believe that the white portion is the unincorporated portion of King County, unincorporated King County there, and that it's not a priority for habitat restoration for Chinook salmon. The taupe areas, you're an incorporated city area.
And just a comment, because way up on the bottom right-hand corner, the top of the cedar, that's where I started my career when I moved here, so all that upper country I know.
The municipal watershed that's up there.
Yeah, when it was National Forest Land up there one time. Anyway, okay. So, our, go ahead, you want to make a motion? Go ahead.
I'd make a motion to recommend to the full council approval of the proposed resolution ratifying the 2017 update to the Lake Washington Cedar-Samamish Watershed RIA8 Chinook Salmon Conservation Plan. Second?
Second. All right. So, we'll vote. All aye? All ayes? Aye.
Aye.
All right. I have one more question, though, because it's set to come on the consent.
Yes.
And I just think we should talk about this a little bit in a brief manner. There's a lot of, you know, not your full presentation of 20 minutes, but some highlights of some of the good work we've done, some of the money that's been come back in capital projects that we're realizing that that's coming back to us. Some of those highlights, I think, the rest of the council and the public could see in the whole thing.
So, I wouldn't agree, and the reason I wouldn't agree is because March 19th, the meeting is going to be a terrifically long meeting. We've got both of the, and the DA's on there. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of conversation, and I think that this, I think that we should be careful that we are, that we do, that's why we have committees to do this work, and I think we have a great presentation that somebody can go look to if they want to watch it. It's also, all of the presentation is in here, and I think we have to make choices about where, what we put on consent and what we don't. It's not a matter of what's not important that goes on consent. It's a matter of our business meetings and managing our business meetings in a way that's manageable. And I don't know that we get something, if we get something super short that's a presentation, I don't know that it does the job that you're suggesting that it does, and that's to let, assuming more people watch the regular council meetings than watch this, they still don't get, they don't get the full presentation, and that's really the value of the full presentation. I don't see the value in the short presentation except to tell people publicly that they should watch this, and we can do that in your committee report. But that's, that's my view. It's not a matter of it not being important enough for regular business, it's a matter of meeting management.
May I ask a question of Mr. York? You mentioned that there will be, on the calendar already, there will be an item regarding RIA8, although not specifically this.
A grant application for the next project we anticipate doing.
What I'm wondering, because I agree with both of my councilmembers, I am wondering if there could be some information provided about the other plans that are specifically in the works for Issaquah, the map that Jason showed with the different projects that are in Issaquah, for example.
Jason can talk about this maybe better than me, but there's ongoing work in Issaquah even now that's not city-originated. At the mouth of Lakes of Mamish State Park and Issaquah Creek, there's Mounds of Island Greenway doing work, and some more work on Lefing-Jagibbs Creek that is underway.
We can provide that information at the meeting. We can incorporate that in the presentation.
Yeah, so, we have a lot of good things to tell you about, if that's what you want.
I didn't follow that. What are you talking about? Something on the 19th agenda? Because when I was...
I think Councilmember Hunt was asking for just a brief description of other projects that the city might intend to pursue relative to that slide that was shown tonight, as Bob makes his presentation on our current grant application.
So, what is, you're talking about on the 19th meeting? Because I'm not seeing anything there that's not also on consent.
Well, it's on consent now, I think.
Are you talking about AB 7573, which is Cooperative Watershed Management Grant for Lower Squawk Creek?
Correct, correct.
But that item is also on consent on the 19th?
It's on consent, but...
And so is this one. So, when's a small presentation going to happen if he's on consent? It wouldn't, right?
It wouldn't unless something changes.
So, that suggestion didn't work, as far as getting something mentioned, because that's also on consent.
So, I would suggest that we, and there have, there has been more than one conversation at leadership about managing the regular meetings, and so I might suggest that we ask the leadership, who are not here, but Emily is here for administration, for the tomorrow, or your meeting tomorrow this week?
And I will be at leadership tomorrow.
To look at the length of the meeting and be cognizant of how long that meeting could potentially go with the end of DA's. I'm guessing it will not be a short conversation with both of those agenda bills, and if it's super, if super, super important to you, Bill, that we have a presentation on this, then I would suggest that we look at a different meeting, because I'm super concerned about it being long, but leadership can address that tomorrow.
Okay, good. Then, I will take that with leadership tomorrow. We'll make that decision then as far as whether it's on consent or on regular business or on a different meeting day.
Yeah, leadership, yeah, we'll make that decision. Yeah.
Okay. We've covered this item.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Great. I did like the stuff on the, watching the small outgoing.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. All right. We've got a couple more items here, hopefully, staying on schedule. MD, AB 7485, vacation of a portion of Northeast Gilman Boulevard. Mr. York, don't go too far.
Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to try to launch into this as Bob pulls up a presentation that has images that are in your packet as part of the agenda bill attachments, and just pull some high-level summary information into slide format. And then, there's one slide that we've produced an image on to help clarify a couple issues. So, this particular item is a recommendation to proceed with a vacation of street right-of-way adjacent to properties that are located on Northeast Gilman, right at the end of the road. Hey, Bob, can you be my slide advancer, please? Thank you. I'll give you the signal.
You can't do it from there, can you?
No, I cannot. I'm not in the right place at the moment. Thank you.
Next.
Sure. So, this is the location, that green hatch area is the right-of-way that we are recommending vacating. This was at the property owner's request, but I can say that the city has had conversations for some amount of time about whether this right-of-way is necessary. There are easements on this property that will continue. Those are city easements and Washdott easements for underground infrastructure and also supportive of the wall infrastructure for I-90. So, the green area is the area we're talking about, but we wanted to identify for you the property ownership in the vicinity, since the code requires that we contemplate that, and so that's shown in the blue hash marks. So, really, you can see this, like, extension on Gilman serves a bunch of lots and businesses, but they're all under the same property ownership, and that property owner has asked for this vacation, in part, to be able to contemplate future redevelopment in this area. We don't have any sort of proposal that would have to go through all the land use and permitting approval process, but the city has been asked to consider this right-of-way vacation, and the primary way that we look at these is whether or not we need to continue to own this property, whether it serves our interest to own it, and the city has deemed that this isn't a public road right-of-way that we need to continue to retain in our ownership. So, I think that's the background on it, our requirements. Thank you, Bob. This is just a more technical engineering drawing of that location. You can see Northeast Gilman right down the middle of that. Looks and functions somewhat as a street, but more as a driveway into those properties. The city's requirements are that we include that we get a property appraisal, and we've done that. That's the $140,000 that's shown at the top there. As I mentioned, both we and Washdott will retain the easements that are necessary. And I think I made all those points already on that slide. Be happy to answer any questions that you have, next steps. This item, as it was referred to this committee, also included approval of noticing a public hearing, which will be held on March 19th. We would intend to carry over that public hearing till April 2nd, and the reason for that is the agenda bill and the motion were a little bit out of sync. There's a paragraph in the agenda bill that says the proposed resolution sets the hearing date for the council's regularly scheduled meeting on April 2nd. However, as you referred this bill to this committee, that motion and that... However, as you referred this bill to this committee, that motion and that and the agenda bill set the public hearing for March 19th. So, to avoid any problems, we are recommending that we open it on the 19th. We'll make a brief presentation along these lines, and then continue it to April 2nd, where council will be asked to take action at that time.
Can you go back one slide, Bob, please?
Oh, yeah. If I can remember how to do that.
Hit the left arrow.
Previous.
Yeah, that works.
Oh, there you go. So, the recommendation is a little interesting. It says, "Adopt the ordinance granting the street vacation as presented after the required public hearing." So, I don't know what the requested action is of the committee, because it would seem to be a little bit out of... Yeah, we have some wacky wording happening in this agenda bill, and I apologize for that. The recommendation tonight is to continue this agenda bill forward to March 19th, as it is already established by action that city council took, and then to open that and begin to conduct that public hearing on the 19th.
And continue it to the 2nd.
And continue it to the 2nd, which you would do on the 19th. That motion on the 19th would be to continue it to the 2nd.
Then, just to clarify from my point, just, I think, for everybody again, what we're doing here is, right now, we currently own a piece of property.
Correct.
And it's really somebody's driveway, and we don't need that for anything we are doing. But we need access, WashDOT needs access to I-90 there, because there's a big wall, and we need some access for, you know, easement and so forth. So, we're maintaining all the access that we need to serve anything we need, but we don't need to own the property to do that. We just need to own the easement that allows us to do that.
That's correct.
And that's what we're, the process doesn't really take any away rights, except turn that into private land.
That's correct. And I believe the agenda bill speaks to this as well. Council recently took action to ensure that that WashDOT easement would remain in place.
Yeah. Other questions? Do you have a public comment if need be? Public comment, anybody?
I may be the only one, but that whole property should be a city amphitheater or some sort of public venue, and we shouldn't give up the access to it, because I think we're going to need it in the end when we try to create something. I'm not sure what they're looking at creating, but at the end of that street, why would we give up access? That's a thing of beauty.
Thank you.
Through the park planning process, or the park plan, process of the planning or doing the park plan, we've talked about the Mountain Sound Trail and how it's going to get through town. Is it going to be on the north and the south side of town, and then somehow join the High Point Trail on the north side of I-90? And I've always wondered, is there some way it's possible that this trail actually could go along on that corridor? But it gets interesting in that area, but I'm not sure it's possible. But I would hope we will at least investigate that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, that it would be the committee just continuing this on? We have to make some kind of a motion, or just goes back to council? And we wait till after the public hearing for a... Maybe just to cover our bases, we can make a little motion to refer it for a public hearing on March 19th.
Sounds good.
Okay. I'm fine referring it for a public hearing, but I'm reserving my, how I feel about this until after that, because I need someone once more to think about it. Yeah, I'm happy to collect these questions, public, from council members, and have the appropriate staff hopefully well and back on April 2nd to be able to thoroughly answer those or to incorporate them into the agenda bill as it comes forward.
Okay. Sounds good. Refer it? So, we're in agreement, three of us will refer it to the public hearing in the next council meeting on, what, the 19th?
19th.
All right? All right, thank you. All right. Item E. Four minutes ahead of schedule. AB 7553, the second amendment to South Cove. Again, Mr. York, you're up on that.
So, I just have one slide on this, and it's to show you the reservoir property that we're talking about. The agenda bill requests council's approval of the second amendment to the water and sewer utility assumption agreement between Bellevue and Issaquah. As is common knowledge, we've, or we assume Bellevue's water and sewer service is in South Cove Greenwood Point back at the beginning of 2017. There's over 1,000 utility connections. At the end of the pipe that feeds this neighborhood, there's this reservoir. And to make a long story short, the assumption agreement left the reservoir out of the legal description. So, this, to make it very simple and short, this corrects that discrepancy by a second amendment that both Bellevue and Issaquah, well, Bellevue agrees to, and administrative staff, staffs on both sides are already functioning as if this reservoir was Issaquah. So, and as you might recall, we recently even annexed this particular area, and now it belongs inside the city limits of Issaquah, so.
So, to reiterate that, we, because we kind of thought we did this once already, but then when the lawyers went to actually write up and make the document exchange, there was an error, it wasn't quite written correctly, when the legal descriptions was left out. So, basically, we're redoing what we already did once, we got the wording right, the legal description correct this time.
Exactly. It's...
Which one somebody caught when it went to get signed.
It's a fairly straightforward correction. We're currently functioning in a manner that's consistent with just making the assumption agreement very precise and accurate.
Okay. Discussion?
Well, I don't have any questions. I was just seeing this, this appears to be the first time in seven years on council that I can truly say this seems like housekeeping. Everything else is brought to us that is housekeeping, doesn't turn out to be housekeeping. This seems like housekeeping. And if there was a consent agenda for infrastructure, I think that's where it would be wrong.
Okay. So, all three of us in agreement to send it back to consent on the 19th? Abe, no?
No, no.
No, okay. All right. So, 3 to 0, send it back to consent on the 19th. All right. That done. Our last item, project updates. Do you have anything for us, Mr. York, or Emily? I know that's Curtis Sheldon's bailiwick. We have it in our packet. Everybody look through that. Are there any highlights that we thought we might hit? Because just kind of from the public point of view?
You know, I read through it quickly, as I learned I would be here tonight. And I'd be happy to try to entertain any questions that you might have, but I wasn't planning to give a presentation on it.
Right. Yeah. The only thing I'd mention, again, you know, that's the last time that our big project on 62nd is still on time and on schedule as planned. So, the people that keep asking me, "When's it going to be done?" On time.
Correct.
All right. I think that's one of big interest, for sure. Other than that, I think we can look at that, and it's highlighted, and I think we can skip that for any more in-depth for now. So, I do, then, I guess, so that's our last item. I have one more item, just before I forget. I wish I'd mentioned it earlier. But our CIC meeting next month is not at its usual time. So, just to announce that, it's, again, usually the third Thursday, and instead, next month, it is on the second Wednesday, April 11th, the second Wednesday. Put it in your calendars over there. So, April 11th, next month, not April 19th, which is normally scheduled, and that's because of, again, just too many, too many people can't make that meeting, just because of, it just happens that way occasionally. And we'd like to have some staff here when we can. All right? So, any other items? If not, this meeting is adjourned. 14 minutes ahead of schedule.